I'd like to give a special welcome to one of the Scouts of Troop 206 and to Jason Bavino and his mother. I'm glad that you're here, Jason, and Jason's here. They were on the final requirement of this citizenship in the community heritage. So, I'm trying to get the best of you to kind of put in good government. All right. Item one is board member recognition. I'm calling the mayor to come on up and join me. I'm from the city of Harlem. Hello, go. Mike pointed here.
We should use the wide angle lines so it can be shorter.
Right. We'd like to congratulate you on your appointment to the tax interim tax zone. Awards. Appreciate your continued service. We don't have much to do here about to continue the continued vitality of our communities. So, thanks for the great.
James T. Scann. James here. Library report. Being a few of these. I agree. I'm able to prove to serve our airport quarters that we regretly named you were a very good deserve on that. So, thank you.
Mr. Roberts. I'm wrong. Started late, but you've been appointed to senior citizens advisor for Hampton. So, we congratulate you. Appreciate your continued service. It's Norm Rosen here. This is Mr. Rick Nowell. He's in his office. And then item two is the presentation with certificate of appreciation to see Stephen Sines. Stephen Sines here?
I don't think he's here, ma'am. If you didn't, ma'am.
Item three is a presentation by Raquel Castillo, representative with Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services, bringing the 1115 waiver of possible impact on the harms of community.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Raquel Castillo. I am with the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services, and I'm here with Ms. Patricia Sanchez and Ed Guchapa. They're also with our health department. We are here to deliver information on the Medicaid 1115 waiver, and we are here on behalf of our administrator, Yvette Salinas. To give you just a brief historical background, in 1985, a law passed by the 59th legislature in 1980. It was intended to ensure that any Texas residents who do not qualify for other state or federal healthcare assistance programs receive healthcare services. Everybody knows this as the Cameron County Indigenous Healthcare Program that existed from 1985 to 2007. In 2008, the Cameron County partnered with the Baptist Medical Center in Harlingen, and they formed the Rio Grande Valley Indigenous Healthcare Corporation. This partnership allowed federal funds for hospitals to be drawn down. It was known as the upper payment limit. On September 1st of last year, the 82nd legislature mandated Texas Health and Human Services Commission to expand capitated managed care statewide. And everybody's familiar that Medicaid currently transitioning from paid for service to managed care. Why are we changing? Current federal regulations do not allow for upper payment limits in a capitated managed care delivery system. So, Texas submitted an 1115 waiver to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, which are the Feds, as a way to transform and protect UPL funding. This is a five-year endeavor retroactive to September 1st, and the waiver was approved back in December 12th of last year. Basically, the 1115 waiver does preserve the hospital funding, which is the funding that they receive from uncompensated care. It also provides incentive payments for healthcare improvement and also referred to as community health projects for district. It does have the potential to increase access to federal funds to 29 million statewide. So, what does this mean for municipalities such as City of Harlingen? These public funds would be available for new projects and expanded projects. For example, if the City of Harlingen has a half-mile walking trail, and they would like to expand it to a one-and-a-half mile walking trail, then the City of Harlingen if the City of Harlingen has set aside 1,000 in public funds to expand the walking trail, the federal government would match those funds. Right now, it hasn't been determined at what rate, but historically, the UPL has averaged 1.5. So, in other words, if the City of Harlingen has $1,000 to fund a walking trail, the federal government, if we do use the 1.5 rate, they would match it at 1,500. So, there would be 2,500 available for those funds. This low chart shows how the funds would flow. Basically, the funds would go from municipalities to the county to the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, and then to the to the Feds. The Feds would then return that money along with the match to the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, and then to the Cameron Hospitals, Cameron County Hospitals. Right now, the Cameron County Hospital is either one set, again, obviously, the money is for the uncompensated care pool, but the incentive pool would be the money that would be coming in for the community projects. This spreadsheet on this slide shows what Texas proposes for the distribution of these two of these funds on both categories, on the incentive pool and on the uncompensated care pool. Right now, we are considered to be in the first year, but it's business is continuing as usual with the UPL funding, so it's considered the transitional year. If you see in the chart, by year five, 50% will be going to uncompensated care pool, and 50% will be going for the community health projects. Cameron County Commission's court did approve Cameron County's participation back on April 19th of this year. Right now, Cameron County participates in Region 5 of the regional healthcare partnerships, and it does include four counties, Cameron, Isango, Starr, and Williston. The regional healthcare plan, as part of the partnership, there has to be a plan in place. It must be created. Right now, Cameron County does have a committee, and they're working on a plan, and that plan will be put together as part of the regional healthcare plan. The plan does include public input, so eventually, there will be public hearings, and it does require for broad local plan engagement, including county medical associations, local government partners, children's hospitals, health science centers, and other key stakeholders. So, what's next? Basically, at this point, the health department is making these presentations and would like to know really if cities are interested in participating, and they would like to get this information hopefully by June 1st and work on some projects, you know, if cities have some projects in mind to bring them over to the table so that we can include them in the plan. Right now, Dr. Renninger and Dr. McCormick from the University of Texas Health Science Centers School of Public Health in Bronzel, they have offered assistance to the cities to help them out, to come up with a plan on some of the projects that they can work on. For more information on the waiver, you can contact Ms. Yvette Salinas or Pedro Inojosa, Chief Operations Director, at this number 2473685, and they're willing to meet either with the city major, mayor, or the city manager, or really any designate that you might have. To talk more about the waiver, you can also visit the Texas Health and Human Services Commission at this website. The information is changing every day, so that will probably be the best site to go for the most recent information.
Are the members of the committee posted on the on that website, the second website that's listed there?
The community members, I believe, they, I'm not sure, but they are getting emails. I believe Ms. Salinas has been sending out emails to all the community members, to the, I believe, city mayors and city managers, and to public health officials within each of the municipalities. And we do have hospitals participating.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Staff be working on this. Is it the question, did we wait to ask questions? Or?
Yeah. I noticed that one of the examples that you show is the matching money on a walking trail. What if we're already in the process of bringing in the trails? Can we bring in?
Well, projects have to be new, or they have to be expanded. It can't be for existing projects. They have to be.
Well, we've got some on the drawing board. I don't know where.
Okay. Well, it depends where you are with that. You can say, we have only this amount of money. Right now, it hasn't been determined whether walking trails have been approved, but it's something that you can submit for approval. But again, Ms. Salinas and Mr. Inojosa would be willing to meet with you.
And I think, Commissioner, we, on our hike and bike master plan, we identified some areas throughout the city that, you know, that could catch up.
That could be used with this.
And this, you know, we can give that plan to them.
I guess the other question would be, if we have a healthcare foundation, that that would be considered a public partnership? If that foundation is?
Really, if it's among those groups, they can be part of the community.
The reason I was asking about the committee is that I think we need to, we need to monitor, we need to try to be, kind of know what's going on, follow what's going on, develop of the plan. And so, like, know the numbers that they are and the meetings they're going to be, and probably they will, just direct the staff to have some, number of the staff monitor the progress of this, to determine the practical effects, you know, might be, I guess, more of a medical funding issue, or the, I don't know, I'm not sure, I understand the non-medical.
I'd like to ask a question.
Manny Bella approached me a couple of months ago about this, the same thing, about it's possible helping us in funding from a hike and bike group, if I can sort of.
It felt like there's a preventative.
Yes, yes, because basically, the Feds don't just want to pay the medical bills. They want to invest in projects that will improve the community health.
Definitely sounds like something.
So, I can say.
Well, thank somebody, well, thank somebody, man, make sure that we follow up.
And it will keep us in.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. All right. Item four is public announcement events.
Mayor, I have one that works for the public. Okay. I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up Saturday for the neighborhood cleanup that was done. I know staff was there. They did a lot of cleanup. They filled up one container. I don't know how much it was. It was probably several tons. I don't know if we've gotten the weight down yet. Some 40 tires were picked up from the two or three block neighborhood. I just want to commend the staff for their efforts this last Saturday. But I also want to announce that, coming up real quick, and actually before our next city commission meeting, that's why I want to announce it today, the next location is off of Peaking Street from Newcomb, and it's going to be District 1, and that's on June the 2nd. So, if anybody wants to participate in that particular neighborhood cleanup, it's going to come up on June the 2nd.
Mayor, real quickly, on July 7th, I'm working on a concert, I'm called Freedom Concert. I've also secured an architect for the states that I had proposed to the city commission. I'm really happy to announce that that architect is going to do his services free of charge. So, I'm hoping that between July 7th and July 21st, we're working on this project, and we're going to try to go through it real fast. Thank you.
Mayor, I actually had an announcement. Is Eddie here? Eddie Medden? I wanted to announce to the commission that, or to the public, actually, that Eddie Medden is our new head golf professional. Eddie started with the city in July of 2002 as a pro shop assistant, and he went on to become the assistant golf professional in November of 2010. He was promoted to head golf professional in May of this year, and he has been with the city for approximately 10 years. Eddie is a member of the PGA, the Professional Golf Management Program. And also, in interesting fact, Eddie, back in 1998, Eddie was actually a catcher for the White Wings baseball team. Welcome.
Mayor, I just have one more announcement. Now that you brought us to White Wings, everybody's welcome, I believe, the White Wings are having a parade Saturday night.
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. And so, everybody's welcome to participate or come out and see, you know, see the latest members of the White Wings team as they get ready to start their new season.
The parade will begin at 11:00 a.m. at Fifth and Jackson Streets, go down Jackson to A Street, turn left, and disband. Any other announcement, public events?
Mayor, I think there's also, just a reminder, I think this Saturday, there's a Lupus Walk at Pendleton Park, and then we also have the Bark in the Park with the American Heart Association Saturday.
And that's at?
At the Kellman.
All good events, and we encourage you to participate. Item five is the approval of events for April 18th, which has been in the wild. So, let me refer to that, or corrections, revisions.
Mayor, I'm going to make sure that we have the April, I'll make a review of April 18th.
All those in favor, say aye. Minister approved, consented agenda. I would say a and b, it's a motion to adopt, consented agenda. Officer, say aye. Motion carries. Item seven, consider taking action to extend the election of Mayor Pro Tem from May to November 2012 to coincide with the November 6, 2012 general election.
I'd like to make a motion, you go ahead and table that, because it doesn't coincide with the wording from the charter. And I'd like to see, Roxanne, go ahead and just rewrite it, and then bring it back next agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, discuss and consider adopting ordinance to create an elderly and disabled residential parking permit, ensure parking space availability in front of their homes.
I know Mayor Chris Bogle signed this with me, but we have elderly, senior citizens, sometimes both handicapped and wheelchairs in their houses, and, you know, you get people parking in front of the house, and it's hard for any kind of emergency vehicle or home health vehicle to park there and to get inside to help these people. What I'm proposing is to directing staff to come up with an ordinance to where we can't put a no parking sign or a no parking sign for a certain distance in front of the house paid for medical purposes only, and we issue permits. Either ambulances, they don't need permits, but home health care permits, family members who want to park their permits, and these permits will be actually identified to that address. So, they won't be able to go on the other side town and park in a park where they're, you know, a place where they're not supposed to park them. But the whole object of this is to help a lot, because we have a lot of senior citizens that have problems with parking. One of them is right across the street from the library. They have, I have two elderly citizens, senior citizens that have both wheelchairs, and when it gets too crowded there, they park in front of the house. It's hard to get an ambulance in there, it's hard to get people out of the house. So, you know, with the commission's permission, I'd like to direct staff into coming up with something. And of course, the permits will have to be paid for. We can determine the price of the permits later. But for home health, for certain family members to park there, you know, they're the ones that should be getting the permits, not anybody else. Anybody else that's parked there illegally should be just towed away, because they're just blocking the front lawn for any type of emergency situations.
Commissioner, if I could suggest that whatever it is that you recommend, do you also ask that we run through the senior citizen driver board to get their info as well?
Well, basically, they've already done that, and they've already talked about it. That's why I'm talking about it here now. Now, I do believe this, though, if we're going to do this, senior citizens, you know, we have to ask for kind of an application process, you know, just to verify that permits are actually being used for what they're being used for. And that'd be part of it, too. So.
One thing for staff to consider, I've talked to them, they talked about that issue, and I think it'd be something for staff to follow up on to make sure that it doesn't contradict somebody existing no parking zones and the purpose behind those no parking zones. And if this would apply to residences where there's an existing off-road parking, like the driveway, I think staff should look into that, see if there's something that would fit that particular situation there, where it may not even necessarily be elderly, it just disabled as well.
Right, right. Yes, I agree. You know, and what we do, right now, all I'm asking for the commission to approve is to discuss and possibly come up with an ordinance and bring it back, maybe even next agenda or agenda afterwards to take.
We didn't really post it as an action item, but I think we could just ask the staff to look into it.
Right.
There's no objection to that. So, if there's no objection to that, we just ask the staff to look into it and bring us back some options.
Sure. Okay. I agree with that.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Anything else on that? Item nine, consider an ordinance on first reading, the ordinance 10-55, following abandoned 30-foot road, right away on the west side of Travelodge subdivision, 10-foot alley located on the south side of Travelodge Motel subdivision, 10-foot utility easement along the south side of Motel, of Travelodge Motel subdivision, 10-foot utility easement along the south side of Motel Park subdivision, 10-foot utility easement along the west line of Motel Park subdivision, and easement where alley and utility dated January 17, 1973 filed February 5, 1973, and reported volume 52, page 241, D. Rivers, County, Texas. And easements or alleys and utilities dated January 17, 1973 filed February 5, 1973, and reported volume 52, page 241, D. Rivers, County, Texas, and right away, and easement shown located on the south side of Sparkville, West Expressway 77, South Texas.
Glad to record replant that, Commissioner Bavino, as of saying from the sign, and has found the competition.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The staff is requesting to amend the existing ordinance 1055 to correct the legal description on 30-foot road wideway and a 10-foot alley intended to be abandoned for the subject ordinance. This is a subject road rightofway, it's off of the south side of Sparkville 4, west of Expressway 77. This is a 10-foot alley. These rightofeways are not in use, the rightofeways are not part of any thoroughfare plan. Staffs are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions on the item.
The only question I have is, this is specifically for the projects that we're working on going on the other side, am I right?
Correct. There is currently a subdivision pending approval, subject to these abandons being approved.
Item A is public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone might speak for or against this proposed ordinance. Is there any one? There are no one opposed a public hearing, go to item B, consider take action to adopt approved ordinance on first reading, the first mention, the above mention proposed ordinance towards number 1055. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance banning the public utility easements for alleys and utilities and banning the public road dedicated on a 59.741 acre tract of land out of Motel Park subdivision and waiving the fair market value purchase price for purposes of economic benefit.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries. Item 10, consider take action to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the lower government council and city partnership to accept the transfer of equipment acquired of fiscal year 2009, ordinance, great grant program as part of the L.R.G.B.D.C. respond response system strategy. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioner, the city manager, what is it, the interlocal agreement? The development council received five pieces of equipment. They're carbon monoxide detectors, it's a non-invasive tool. They were bought through grant money in 2009, and they were distributed, or they're being distributed to the hazmat teams from across the alley. There's no matching funds, and staff is recommending approval.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, to take action to approve the interlocal agreement.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Item 11, consider ordinance on first reading, rezonate residential single-family R1 district to residential patio home, RPH district, lots 1 through 8, block 1, lots 1 through 8, block 2, Los Marciano subdivision located on Apotheino Real Avenue. Consider replace road, have a spread plan.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezonate subject property from residential single-family to residential patio home to allow for a garden home subdivision. Subject property is located off of the west side of Stewart Place Road. This is the existing subdivision. It's currently a 16-lot subdivision that's currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to replant it into 42 garden home lots. Lot sizes will vary, mostly being sized from 6,900 square feet, and there's few lots about 12,000 square feet. See, subject property is vacant. This is a proposed replant. Request is generally consistent with a future land use map. Public hearing was conducted by the planning and zoning commission. There's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z commission recommending approval. Take any questions, and the applicant is present for any questions.
Sign calls for public hearing. Public hearing, and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning. There are no one opposed a public hearing, and go to item B, consider take action to adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading, the above mentioned rezoning request. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27, in the City of Harlingen, rezoning from not designated end district to residential patio home, RPH district, for lots 1 through 8, block 1, and lots 1 through 8, block 2, Los Marciano subdivision, located on El Gomito Via, Amigo West of Stewart Place Road, providing for publication and ordering other matters related to the program.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. I suppose motion carries. Item 12, consider an action on first reading, rezonate from not designated end district to residential mobile home district, the west one half of lot 127, all of lot 128, unit 3, Palm Vista Estates, located at 15956 Queen Sagal Drive, Africa and Gray.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezonate subject property to, from not designated, to residential mobile home, to add in addition to the existing patio home, excuse me, existing mobile home that's on the subject property. This property is located on Queen Sagal Road. You see, most of the area is developed with mobile homes, and there's some single-family houses on the properties, that area. The request is consistent with the high-density land use for the future land use plan. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z commission are recommending approval. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is present for any questions.
We have to, you're going through every lot, or are you going to do a mass change on this area?
At this one, we're doing every lot. Staff did conduct a land use study of that area and was prepared to present rezoning that area in phases, however, we were directed to put it on hold as a result of the area being under litigation for the annexation.
I call for public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning. Is there anyone? There are no one opposed a public hearing, and go to item B, which is to consider and take action to adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading, the above mentioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen, rezoning the west one half of lot 127 and all of lot 128, unit 3, Palm Vista Estates, located at 15956 Queen Sagal Drive, from not designated. Estates located at one five nine five six Queen Sago Drive, from not designated end district to residential mobile home M H district, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregotten.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider an ordinance on first reading for specific use permit to allow an adult business retail smoke shop and novelty to the general retail G R district located at sixteen oh one, South seventy-seven, Sunshine Strip Suite B, bearing a legal description of lots twenty-two and twenty-three, Block Atlanta Royal Estate subdivision, applicant immediate surrender.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult business, which would be a retail smoke shop and novelty shop, this would be located on the corner of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip and San Houston, being this property here. It would be out of an existing fourteen-hundred square foot suite, out of this strip center, there's four different suites. Request complies with the required parking requirements, this is a proposed site plan, seventy percent of their products would be mostly, uh, smoke-related products, tobacco products, and thirty percent would be adult products. The applicant would not be selling synthetic products, has been advised of that, is in agreement with that. Request was reviewed by the Fire Prevention Department and the Building Inspections Department, and they had no objection to the specific use permit being granted, subject to complying with city regulations. For the Health Department, a health permit is not required. The Police Department also reviewed the request and submitted an activity report for their other location located on West Tider Street, and for the two-year period, they had thirteen calls, most were police-initiated citizen contact issues. The Police Department is not recommending the disapproval of this request. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, and the affected property owners within two-hundred-foot radius were notified, fourteen notices were sent out, staff didn't receive any objection to the request. Excuse me, staff is recommending approval subject to the applicant complying with the required parking, subject to continuing required state permits, prohibiting the sales of synthetic products on the premises, compliance with all the requirements administered by the appropriate city departments, and comply with any future regulations dealing with synthetic products. The P&amp;Z Commission also recommended approval based on staff recommendation with the additional condition that they got some, they're in some middle of an audit of that establishment for that use. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is present for any questions.
Commissioner Seale, do you remember last time we were talking about this, and there's a, is that actually an archaic, archaic, like a Thursday tobacco that they can buy for like, say, a ten or fifteen-minute night, we were talking about that?
Right, that was gonna be my question. I know, I've read through the documentation on, I think even the Planning and Zoning Commission had some questions about what the intent was on some of the restrictions we placed on the S U Ps. Staff has a clear understanding with these establishments of what we're trying to prevent from sale to our youth, right?
Right.
Because I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission themselves were asking questions, I don't think they had a clear understanding of what our intention was. I would encourage staff to maybe attend the next meeting with them and explain to them what we're trying to accomplish, so that we can, you know, have a united front on that. The second part of the question is, I know this came up during the last S U P with the other establishment, how far along are we with developing the ordinance? Is the question with either Carlos or the city?
We're currently working with the, with the police chief and hope to have something for you at the next upcoming, maybe not at the next one, but at the following meeting, Commissioner. I mean, I can't personally see objecting to doing this, but I would like to see what we have talked about in the past with the other one to be incorporated in the S U P.
I believe that has incorporated, it is incorporated in the ordinance.
No, the, the, I think, was, if there are any other establishments, is there an ability for us to go back and amend the existing S U P if there's another establishment that's covered by a previous one?
I think there should be.
The question's to staff.
Yeah.
I don't know if there is another establishment, but do we have any other establishments that we want to at least go back?
Well, just sort of put, so probably goes what we're talking about, as we talked about last week, we're talking about synthetic, uh...
Cannabinoids, uh, they go into the, the sale of...
It's not really, it's not really a controlled substance.
Maybe some of that, and it's caused, and that's a concern from a public standpoint, it's, uh, used in other locations, have ingested that, and they did stick...
Can't we just buy, can't we just buy ordinance, prohibit, I think the city attorney and council wrote out, buy ordinance, we could prohibit the sale of...
That's what I'm...
...adult business, and that would find, so it wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily include the S U P, we just prohibit the sale of these items.
That's the idea, that's what we're trying to get to, instead of us having to go S U P by S U P, we pass that ordinance.
Yeah.
I think if that's staff looking for that, an ordinance, that'd probably be the easiest one. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right, then, we need to do anything else on this, any other discussion?
I'm going to mostly, yeah, I don't remember what we already, we have the public hearing.
Close up here to read caption.
Have we read the caption?
Not yet.
Okay. Consider take action to adopt the ordinance through the, for the first reading, so for the S U P, would you please read the caption?
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance, ordinance number oh seven dash two seven of the city of Carlington, to issue a specific use permit to Merenia Sedvantes to allow an adult business retail smoke shop novelties in the J O retail G R district located at sixteen oh one, South seventy-seven Sunshine Strip Suite B, bearing a legal description of lots twenty-two and twenty-three, Block eleven, Ayoto Estate subdivision, subject to, one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces, two, obtaining and maintaining the proper permits from the state, three, prohibiting the sale of synthetic drugs, i.e. synthetic cannabinoids, synthetic stimulants, and synthetic psychedelic and hallucinogens in this establishment, four, comply with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, police, and fire prevention departments, five, complying with any future ordinances regulating synthetic drugs, and six, yearly submitted to the city of annual sales audit for the subject business by a private professional auditor or firm not affiliated with the subject business and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregone.
Motion move, not to ordinance. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item fourteen is to consider take action to approve resolution, that one, authorize its review of Texas Gas Service Company cost of service adjustment tariff, do a pre-strike review of TGS application along the local cities served by TGS, three, hires legal consulting service to negotiate with the company and directly with that location, and four, require TGS to reverse all reasonable costs associated with city's efforts in the rate making effort.
On May first, two thousand twelve, the city of Carlington received a request from the Texas Gas Service to increase their gas rates. In their request to increase their gas rates, they need about a three-point-four million-dollar increase in their budget to function and operate, but they can only recover about one-point-five million due to agreed five percent cap on the increases, on the annual increases. This request for increase will actually increase residential customers' monthly bills by about ninety-one cents, that's per month, and commercial businesses would increase by about eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents per month, those of course are averages. Various cities throughout South Texas gather together and negotiate whether or not these gas rate increases are acceptable or they can be lowered. If the various cities that gather together actually request each city who participates to pass a resolution, the resolution before the city commission would authorize this cost of service adjustment tariff to be reviewed by a consultant who's actually hired by these cities to negotiate on that cap and the increase or decrease of the cost. Texas Gas Service is responsible pursuant to an agreement to pay for that cost and that consultant to do that negotiation and review. Today, we do have Dean LaFever, who is the Texas Gas Service Director from the Rio Grande Valley Service Area, present to answer any questions or discussions. And in the packet, there are a list of other cities that are being asked to participate. They are Alamo, Alton, Brownsville, Holmes, Donna, A. Couch, Annie Burke, Elsa, Carlington, Haldado, LaFeria, LaFoya, LaVilla, Laguna Vista, Los Fresnos, Lightford, McAllen, Mercedes, Mission, Palm Valley, Palmhurst, Palmview, Benitas, Far, Port Isabel, Primera, Progreso, Rancho Viejo, Raymondville, Riojando, San Benito, San Juan, Santa Rosa, and West Los Torres.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot of cities to meet. See if I have any questions for Dean, or do you want to say, do you want to...
No, today we're simply asking for the city to agree to participate with council governments as we negotiate a settlement on this file.
We have ninety days to negotiate and any new rights become effective on, it's the first two thousand twelve.
Yeah, I think Jeffrey Gay has represented us in these kinds of rate making issues before, and, 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 from West of Texas, they're representing the development council regarding this matter, so. Consider motion to approve the resolution.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign.
Appreciate it.
Item fifteen, consider take action to approve ordinance, amending ordinance number ten dash eight, amending requirements for the membership on the board of directors to the convention business bureau, removing the Hispanic Chamber position, amending the number of members from thirteen to twelve, eliminating the individual from the local car rental agency, replacing them with a board member or employee or anyone from the area, and removing the number of members required for four to five, providing effective date on any other matters related to foregone. Does anybody have any, you want to talk about this, Tom?
I'm here to answer any questions. Basically, these reflect recent changes to the Hispanic Chamber closing and subsequently the other matters pertaining to that as well.
My appointment was the rental car agent, and she hadn't been, for whatever reason, hadn't been able to make the meeting, but I'd like to see not as box our appointees in, so I'd be rather have a citizen be able to serve on the board, not having to deal with the airport or rental car or hotel or something like that. So I would like to make that recommendation as part of my appointment on this. I don't know what any of the other commissioners would think about that.
I agree, too. This has to do with city, and I think, we'll live here and work here, probably does judge the direction the city should take as far as events.
Well, if I might add, I think the logic behind it was to have people that were impacted by the tourism industry and V I A, the airport, is a huge asset to Carlington and certainly is a tourist, it's a big deal for us, so, I'm sorry.
How much of a person flies out of V I A?
Sure, no, I'm just giving you kind of the background and I think where that came from, and, you know, obviously, the rental car agency has not participated in quite some time, but we were trying to keep it within, those specific appointments from the commission do represent hotels, restaurants, and so, you know, someone in that transportation industry was on that.
Right, but the theory, the theory behind it really was, was that a lot of, especially with representation from the hotels, it was funny, and hotels, it was funny, that it's being administered by the city from hotel, hotel tax, and then conveyed to the convention business bureau, there was, in fact, at the time this was set up this way, there was a lot of concern about how money was being expended, in particular, the hotel industry wanted to be involved in, in decision-making process, wanted at least to be able to participate. I think that sort of quieted down, that's not, not much of an issue anymore, but we were trying to get representation from the, from the industry folks who actually deal on a day-to-day basis with people coming into the community, so.
Sure.
Current people, you know, generate enormous amount of, you know, income from people who come into the community, but is your suggestion then just to eliminate any sort of, for just that position, at large?
Yeah, there's a question in mind, you know, but I, you know, somebody that would have some experience.
But that doesn't mean, I mean, Mayor, I mean, that doesn't mean you couldn't put somebody...
No, doesn't mean...
Okay, so we could make that a general...
Okay, why don't we just make, why don't we just leave everything as it is, as proposed, except for the car rental, airport person could just be an at-large person, does that make your requirement?
I appreciate that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
Rather, no, it's, this is ordinance, okay. All right, well then, change the reason, change.
The caption does have the original language, so I'll try and substitute the language accordingly.
Change on the, change on the second reading.
There's a revised version attached to the agenda.
We'll change it on the second reading.
Okay, sir. An ordinance demanding ordinance number ten dash eight, amending requirements for the membership of the board of directors for the commission and visitors bureau, removing the Hispanic Chamber position, amending the number of members from thirteen to twelve, eliminating the individual from the local car rental agency and replacing them with a V I A board member or employee or anyone employed in the airline in the street in Carlington, amending the number of members required from four to five, providing an effective date on any other matters related to foregone.
I think I can, with the motion, yeah. Well, yeah, she's going to modify it for the second reading.
Okay, the motion is to adopt the ordinance on first reading with the change that has been discussed on the second reading. And there's been a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider take action to adopt the resolution authorizing the Armed and Police Department to submit a two thousand twelve selected traffic enforcement program for a ticket, or ticket grant to the Texas Department of Transportation in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, thirty-four cents to pay hiring of off-duty police officers on a rotating basis during the remainder of the holiday. Chief, any...
Good, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Our item before you is just to seek permission to pursue funding in just under six thousand dollars from the Texas Department of Transportation, specifically to participate in NITSA's or the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration's National Clicker Ticket Campaign. In short, we're going to utilize this funding to target seatbelt and child safety seat restraint violations from the period of May twenty-first through June third.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we take action to adopt the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, all right, thanks, Chief. Item seventeen, consider take action to approve, my pitch, the city model, we're set for trial.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have provided you the proposed organizational chart, and I have previously provided you this information, but basically, what I am recommending is a realignment of departments to improve the efficiency and productivity. There are several changes that I am proposing. The first of them are, the first one would be to reclassify the Public Works Director position to an Assistant City Manager for external services position, and then there are several shifts of department between the City Manager and Assistant City Manager, and then, and the new reclassification. The first would be moving the City Secretary and Human Resources Department from the current Assistant City Manager to the City Manager, also moving the Parks Department and Golf Department from the existing Assistant City Manager to the proposed Assistant City Manager for external services position. And then the final one would be moving community development and, the community development division from the, and the NPO from the Planning Department to be under the current Assistant City Manager. And this, this realignment would allow us to be more efficient, I think, in reclassifying the Public Works Director, we'll be able to achieve economies of scales. As you know, later on in the agenda, we'll be making a decision to hire additional personnel from, to, we're going from a private contractor to doing the mowing in-house. This reclassification would allow us to interchange personnel between Public Works and the Parks Department and the Golf Department as well, and that is my proposal.
And you'd be eliminating...
Well, just to give you an example, I think...
You said like, something like nineteen in our...
The initial discussions that we had when we, when the staff was talking about bringing in the mowing in-house, initially, we were looking at nineteen people to do that. The proposal that you have in hand would actually allow us to do it with six persons, two full-time and four part-timers, so actually, it would enhance our efficiency.
And then, and then we, all the other departments just pitch in and...
And we're hoping to do other consolidations of duties.
I think so.
Is there a motion to approve the adoption?
Some moved, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Item eighteen, consider and take action to authorize two new full-time positions and four new part-time positions with a specific purpose of maintaining those city parks and site security maintained by contract.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. We came aware of January of this year, shortly after the new year, that the contractor had taken care of about half of our parks and public sites, could no longer do it, and we terminated the contract, and so staff is proposing tonight to bring on additional staff to take on that work, two full-time positions, four part-time positions. Thing that we've, we've been to keep up with, we've been able to keep up with things since January, we've been lucky, we've had some rain, and so we haven't had to irrigate as much, and we've been able to keep up with mowing pretty well, and so delaying the hiring of these folks this late into the year will also allow us to buy the equipment that we need for these folks, and so staff recommends approval.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion that we take action to adopt the resolution, second decision.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I got one question up. Since we're going to be reorganizing this, with these guys here, and with the help of somebody's other departments, we ought to be able to maintain the parks pretty well, right?
Yes.
That's the intent, Commissioner.
Yes, I'm sorry. And I think one of the things that was part of this logic is that we'll be able to, when the grass gets heavy on the right-ofways and stuff, we can surge into those areas and shift our manpower around, which we could do because, under the contractor, because we were tied to specific areas and specific frequencies of mowing, so we didn't really have a lot of leeway to have them help us at certain times.
Absolutely.
So I think this is going to be, this is going to benefit taxpayers, and we're already saving some money over what we were paying them.
Another example, another example would be, you know, in the springtime and early summer, when all of our leagues are playing, as opposed to in the late summer and the fall when very few of them are playing, and we're not maintaining those fields as much.
And one thing, I have gotten some feedback from the soccer crowd, because I have daughters that play out there, is that since the city has taken over, the fields are striped now, which the contractor had, was kind of not doing as much as they should have been doing, the trash is being picked up now, and of course, we're doing a lot better job than we're doing it for less money than we're paying to have it, have a contract ready. So there is some, already some positive feedback from our customer, which is the users of the soccer.
There are still some areas we can do better, and we're working on it.
Yeah, and we're still, we're still getting better.
There's some issues with the trail, I heard.
Correct.
People are getting hurt, falling in cracks, and, so I think we need to try to alleviate that also.
Yeah, we're working on that, yes.
And I think that's, that's another area that we're going to be able to maintain with the contractor, let some of that stuff go, and we got behind on it, and now we're playing catch-up, so I think we'll see a better quality field out there.
I agree.
Thank you. Any other discussion, or the call for the vote again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, like signed, motion carries. Okay, good. Item nineteen, consider take action to select security lights that will be installed along the Range Wheel Park walking trail, and correct staff to proceed with installation, assistant city manager, sir.
Turned in their own lights around the Range Wheel Park walking trail, and so staff was asked to look at installing some lights out there. We looked at three options. Option one in your packet is to install eighty new twenty watt LED solar lights, the cost for that is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money upfront, and the savings come because you don't have the electrical costs every month.
Right.
The second option we looked at was installing a wind turbine, a five kilowatt wind turbine out there, and sixty, that's a typo on your first one where it says eighty, sixty LED floodlights, and the cost for that is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Staff went ahead and called AEP to find out what it would cost to put regular streetlights around the trail, and the cost to put up fourteen, a hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodium lights and one two hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodium floodlight around the walking trail. And the reason they're less high-pressure sodium lights, high-pressure sodium lights provide a bigger cone of light, so they cover more area, and the cost for that is sixteen thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. We do have, in CDVG, they have allocated forty-nine thousand dollars to install lights on the trail, so staff is recommending that we move forward with option number three and take the AEP estimate, and spending sixteen thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents to install lights, and staff is further recommending that we ask CDVG, and we will ask CDVG, to reallocate the balance of the money, the forty-nine thousand, to try to install some shade structures in the trail, or in that park, I should say.
So how many lights are they intend on putting?
Fifteen.
Is that enough to light up the walk?
We had AEP engineers go out there, and they came up with that design, that's in your packet, and they feel that that's more than enough to cover.
What kind of poles are they going to be on?
They're going to be on wooden poles.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, the aluminum poles would have cost more money, and so we went with wooden poles, and AEP can get on this pretty quickly, they've been waiting on us, so staff is recommending that we move in that direction. Again, the savings, we can, we can have to reallocate to different things, shade structure to be one, because evil.
Is that with the Zavala and bottom parts that we talked about?
It has to be in a low-income census tract, and we can look at other areas.
I think they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
I got a quick question, are you taking the staff's recommendation?
With the shade structures also?
Okay, we have a second, and any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item twenty, consider take action to approve resolution, creating subcommitments to make recommendations to the city commission to approve the appearance of the city parlor and, we had a good meeting on May tenth, a lot of good public input, a lot of good public input, and I appreciate all the commission's participation in that meeting to discuss ways that we could improve the appearance of the committee, and this would just, you know, formalize how we go forward with that process by creating committees that would be chaired by each of the city commissioners, and having a community co-chairing, it would be appointed by the commissioner chairing the committee, and then having a city manager calling staff portion, and then try to be a couple of times, fourth July first, or four back, deadline's not a hard deadline, it's just something that we're trying to shoot for, and some of these things will, I think, we'll be able to do faster, some of them will, we'll take them on, we'll want the time to do, but there was sort of, there was sort of a rise in the reason for clients suggesting people, but for things, and for the mission to me, you know, for entry rates because of the planning background, and the mission for a job because of the interest in litter control, as we talked about before.
Yeah, just sad dropping.
The director of Castillo on the buildings, because he's dealt with the vacant buildings a lot in his past life, and that, which has expressed a lot of interest in our parks, and as he just, as he just illustrated, the conversation we had before, so, that's where I don't know.
Mayor, I've been doing a little research on, you know, on my assignment, and you're right, some of this is going to take a little bit longer, the league parks and corridor planning and stuff like that, so we do need to talk about some additional funding, hiring consultants, and things like that, because it's, I think it's going to be a long process.
And yours is definitely, in many ways, a bigger, a lot of time, big issue.
Yeah, and parks also, I believe, parks.
Gives a lot, gives a lot of time, so, but anyway, this will, at least get us moving forward in some kind of a old guy fashion, and with everybody playing a role, I think it would be a good thing for the commission, so, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some moved, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. All right, thank you. Item twenty-one, consider take action to create the adopt a spot program to encourage citizen participation and beautification and litter cleanup of designated areas in their community.
Mayor, Commissioner, following the call to action that we've had the past several months, and the work that we just had, staff is proposing a new initiative, and we, it's the adopt a spot program, and basically, the way it works, it is a beautification program, it will be supported by volunteers, and we're hoping to encourage citizen participation in beautification projects and litter cleanup throughout our community at regular intervals, and, you know, we're talking about medium, traffic islands, right-ofways, and who can participate, well, basically, everyone can participate, individuals, families, youth groups, camps, schools, businesses, and if we get the input or the partnership that we're looking for from the community, from the volunteers, we're hoping that it will lead to a cleaner community, a sense of community pride and service, so it's a great program, I think it will benefit the community. The amount of volunteer responsibility would be to conduct a general cleanup of the eclectic area six times per year, beautification of the landscaping areas within the area, and we're hoping, again, that this program increases citizen involvement and litter control and beautification throughout our community. I also want to thank Ken and Elida and all the planning and zoning staff, they've actually been, worked real hard, because in the last couple of days, we were able to not only, you know, initiate the program, hopefully get it up to the commission, but we also have partners already, we've got committed partners, we've got the Cameron County Ju and I Justice Department, Tommy Ramirez and his group, we've got the Kmart that have said that they will participate in the program, we have the Home Depot, we also have the US Border Patrol explorers, Lowe's, and the Southwest Key Program. So it's just great that we already have commitments for the program, we're out, we're going to continue to look for additional organizations or individuals that would be interested in participating, and we do have a number where people can call if they're interested to participate, two one six, fifty-two hundred.
One suggestion, Carlos, would be to use some of the existing partners that we have, like in some of the departments, like the police department, we have the neighborhood watch program, we have like nineteen different groups, I don't know how many that are active right now, but it might be good to pitch this to those existing groups that already have their neighborhoods that they take care of from a crime prevention standpoint, there's certainly a relationship between beautification projects and keeping the neighborhood clean and crime, that might be something good, cheap wit for us to look at, maybe partnering further with some of the existing programs we have.
It's a very good suggestion, Commissioner, we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, well, obviously, I think this is something that works hand-in-hand with what we're covering now, and certainly, so, overall, I'd refer to the appearance of the community. Yes, Mayor?
I'm starting, can we go back to the pictures, what you had, the pictures of the lots? Just like Gail Moore, seven, zero, nine, ten lane drive, I would just like to bring to all of your attention the corner of Seventh and Vincent, and also the park right across the street. Mr. Mayor, our neighborhood has been dealing with, for a year now, tons and tons and tons, no exaggeration, of dirt. Commissioner Castillo, I'd like to bring that to your attention, the Seventh Street Road is nothing like as grand and nice as Thirteenth, beautification needs to happen there like right away, we've got blowing dirt, we've got dirt washing down into the drainage system, we could use your help with landscaping and beautification right there in that area, it looks like the local landfill, it's embarrassing, it's embarrassing, right, take a look, we've had, okay, you all were working on, what was the name of the Bogus Field, so at Bogus Field, they were digging up lots of dirt, and I mean, for days and days and days, after another, truckloads of dirt were brought there to the park, but also at Seventh and Vincent, I think that's your friend that owns that lot, I'm not sure, but tons of dirt, please put that on your list and come and investigate, Seventh Street is terrible.
The discussion is the adopt a spot.
Well, we need to adopt that spot, that would be awesome, thank you.
She wants to adopt that spot, so we'll reform. Item twenty-two, consider and take action, my lady second.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the initiative focused on.
Okay, is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Disposed, like signed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, consider and take action to approve the new initiative focusing on preventing criminal activities on blighted properties in collaboration with the Office of Work Control, where you're running separate.
Mayor, this is also a new initiative that works hand-in-hand with beautifying our community, and we're actually working through the Harlingen Police Department, and we want to take on a new partnership with the Border Patrol, this Taking Care of Business Initiative actually helps us, will address blighted properties and will address criminal activity within those properties, and in specific properties like the Sun Valley Motel, we could, we want to start an initiative to look at that building as a priority, and we do have Karen Masia from the US Border Patrol, they would like to make a small presentation to the commission.
Mayor, welcome.
Thanks.
Mayor, City Commissioners, I just want to thank you first of all for allowing me to come and speak with you all tonight, I am here on behalf of Rio Grande Valley Border Patrol and the Combined Enforcement Unit, it is a fairly new unit, like the city manager said, we have been in existence for approximately a year now, and one of our major initiatives right now is the Taking Care of Business Initiative, and what this does is a valley-wide revitalization program through collaborated efforts and proactive collaboration with local state law enforcement and with the Office of Attorney General. I have a short video, if you guys would allow me to play that, and then if there are any questions, I'll answer those questions. The Rio Grande Valley Sector Border Patrol implemented the Taking Care of Business Initiative in January two thousand eleven, this initiative is a proactive law enforcement approach that uses an existing law under the Texas Nuisance Abatement Statutes to deter illegal activity at local businesses. The Border Patrol Combined Enforcement Unit is working with various law enforcement agencies to educate business owners and operators within the RGV sector in combating criminal activity occurring on their property. The initiative focuses on bus lines, warehouses, hotels, and motels where the criminal element exploits its invasive operations to smuggle aliens and narcotics. To achieve maximum deterrent effect on potential smugglers, this initiative is comprised of three components, a media campaign, community outreach, and enforcement that will lead to the eventual closure of non-compliant businesses. The Taking Care of Business Initiative aims to deter the smuggling of humans, drugs, and other contraband, which in turn will reduce crime in the Rio Grande Valley, thereby improving the quality of life in our community. Local police departments, state and federal agencies will identify locations constantly being used to conduct criminal activity such as prostitution, obscenity, gambling, organized criminal activity, delivery, possession, and the manufacturing or use of controlled substances, as well as discharge of a firearm and alcohol violations. The Taking Care of Business Initiative is a collaboration between the Texas Attorney General's Law Office, the district attorney's office, the local law enforcement agencies, and the Rio Grande Valley Border Patrol Center. This is a proactive law enforcement approach that seeks to educate local business and property owners as to their roles and responsibilities in determining criminal activity. We believe that by denying criminals the ability to exploit local businesses and property, revitalization in the Rio Grande Valley can become rare. The Border Patrol encourages the business community to pay attention to suspicious activity, business owners and operators take a vested interest in protecting your business, attract legitimate customers, and report illicit activity. To report suspicious activity in area businesses, call the RGV Border Patrol toll-free hotline, eight hundred eight six three nine three eight two, or your local police department or Crime Stoppers hotline. If you all have any questions, I will address those.
Mayor, I want to thank the Border Patrol, especially Agent Robert Bennett, if he's not here at this presentation, and also our police department, they have been very willing to help us with the mission that we have to beautify and improve our community, I believe that this particular program will help us to put pressures on owners to improve the blighted properties. improve the blighted properties, and, and staff would recommend the, the approval.
Once it's done, what, what's our first step after we approve it?
We are looking at approximately thirteen properties already here in the Harlingen area itself. We just have to go on a case-by-case basis, um, we go back and get criminal UCR reports from the local police departments and start building those cases. So basically, all we need is information from the community and outreach to say, hey, could you take a look at this property or that property? Of course, we have to meet the criteria in order to send the case to the Office of Attorney General, but we will look into each case. As you can tell by the news, we have had time and time again after stash houses, stash houses, and those are also included in that. We, of course, take a proactive approach first, reach the property owner, address it through that proactive approach, then if it continues to happen and we get those six arrests within a one-year timeframe, then we can proceed on giving them a fine or shutting down that property for up to one year. So it is a lengthy process, but it can be done, and it, once we go out to those business owners and property owners, we have not had, in the cases where we've already spoken to those individuals, reoccurrences to date. It's not that it won't happen, but as to date, we have not had recurrence after recurrence once we've gone out there and spoken to them.
Indeed.
I, I think this is a great partnership with the, between the city and Border Patrol, and another great opportunity for us to work together, and there've been a number of, number of things that we, that we do do together, and so I think this is something that I'm really, I'm very grateful to the, uh, Border Patrol for bringing, uh, to our attention and offering this, uh, this program, uh, that we can utilize as just another, uh, another, you know, effort, another layer in, in, uh, combating, uh, the undesirable element of kind of, uh, uh, criminal behavior in our community, so, uh, I'm, I'm grateful to you all for bringing this program to us. I think it's great, really excited.
We, we want to thank you, even though we're a federal agency, we do want to be within the community involvement, and that's why the chief started this initiative initially, so that's what it is, is to all push back for, uh, city revitalization and community outreach.
I'd like to take a, take a motion to approve the new initiative.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
The votes like sign. Again, thank you for being here, thank you for sending the video with us. Item twenty-three, consider taking action to approve agreement with development corporation Harlingen campus commercial, did up the market study and trade area in the amount of four thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. The account of development corporations having a meeting at the, at the thing right now, so nobody from the EDC is here, I was at the meeting, and the proposal is here, we did, uh, they, uh, they approved, they approved this contract to, basically to obtain retail, information, it's, it, the, the demographic information that can be shared with retailers, uh, or potential retailers to locate within the community. We did something like this a few years ago, I think it was a very good product, and I sort of challenged these guys, and they said, no, that wasn't a very good product, but we said, well, it's a good product, because we do more.
And you bought?
They convinced, no, they convinced, the word, the, the, uh, the information that they're talking about providing is information that, you know, is the kind of information that, like, is independent information that can be provided to retailer, rather than anecdotal information that all the cities provide.
Do you know if this was budgeted, or is this gonna be required budgeting?
I think it's gonna require.
They've already budgeted. I think so, yeah.
I think it required a budgeting, if I'm not mistaken.
It wasn't budgeted initially, yeah.
Initially budgeted.
So we would have to, they would have to get a budget.
So I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the agreement.
Second, second, they'll be budgeted. Okay, all those, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
The votes like sign, the motion carries.
Mayor, I have just one, one other thing to ask you about, with the house around there, you know, it's, I was hoping to ask Don or somebody here from EDC, but maybe somebody here would understand that better. We incorporate, or is it of values that have a study to include the downtown area in, to capturing of that kind of information? We've had a lot of discussion about revitalizing the downtown area, and I'm, I'm just wondering, if this type of study, if we include the downtown area as well, would that be of a benefit to us and the community?
I think they're, they're talking about the whole city.
Yeah, city, citywide.
One thing, one thing, if nation is available, then we can target certain retailers to come, including, they will come into the city, including the downtown area, too.
I would, I would think that this would determine the capacity of the demographics and, and the spending, the purchasing power.
Not just in one area.
Right, right.
They should, they should.
Or some of the spending habits or the.
That's what I think it does, I think it analyzes the catchment area, you know, and the amount of.
And then even present that to potential retailers who might have the market.
All right. Yeah, there was heard, we would ask Cheryl to call Don and just, you know, talk to him about it, and if there's someone, uh, you know, to, uh, be sure that, you know, we maximize the information, so it would also be helpful for downtown efforts.
We'll, we'll get with, uh, the director tomorrow, and we'll have that, and meet with her. Cheryl, has, has they mentioned anything to you about this?
Um, actually, I called Don earlier in the week, and I was told that the four areas in there were identified because it related to the TIF, and that's why downtown was not included, so.
Oh, he didn't get it included?
All right. Yeah. Anything else on that? We, we did a fruit, we did a tech.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, we just need to follow up, because I don't want that issue that the legislature gets behind the charts. Okay, item for border appointments, are there any border appointments? Joe Wagner, reappointment to the construction board's adjustments, and Ouka Morais to the connection visitors bureau.
Mayor, I have one, uh, reappointment to the council advisory committee, Shannon Garza, and, uh, Michael Bowden to the zoning board's adjustments.
I have, uh, one reappointment, Tony Salas, to the CDVG, and I have a, uh, new appointment, Michael Garza, to the, uh, board of work.
All right, is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve the board appointments. Second?
All those, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, move up to citizen communication. Okay, we're the, check lead, Earl Rodriguez, are they here? All right, well, that, yeah, that's citizen communication, or with item twenty, we're gonna, item twenty-five, I'm not, I'm not gonna call item twenty-five B, yeah, just gonna call, I don't know where to get that, and twenty-seven, I, we're not, we're not gonna call those two items, twenty-five B or twenty-seven, uh, staff's not ready on those two items. So, uh, we're gonna go with item twenty-five A, uh, post the second session, discuss the following items, so, since, since, fact, it's one, regarding the special delivery of the five, the next of this project, this project gray, with this city commission, the economic, economic expansion, expansion project, assess financial sentencing project, see the revise, regardless of the financial sense, and form an official council, revise this management, and the management. Second, second. If they ever say aye, now, second, second.
I said that, they're very quick on the agenda. They're sitting on the agenda after, after this.
I, I, I just, yes, you did.
I did, I did, I did.
Now waste of my time, so you either, you either give it to me, or just come and deny it.
I called, I called.
They're very quick on the agenda after, after this, you know, right?
If we still have a quorum, I'll, I'll let you speak, I, I don't have a problem.
All right.
I want to read Danny.
You don't have one?
Joey or Scotty?
I was thinking of Joey or Robert.